The invocation will be given by Westwood Baptist Church Pastor Steve Smart. Pledge of Allegiance will be provided by Commissioner Howard Thompson. We all stand, please.
Gracious Assemblyman Father, we're thankful, we're blessed to be able to have the occasion, being able to gather and assemble forums such as this. Thank you for government, thank you for the blessing that it is that you provided for us. We thank you for each of these men and women who have set apart themselves, served this community with great thanks, Father. We pray that you would continue to lead them, guide them, bless this time together. Father, bless them with a sense of righteous unity, way that they can agree on the things that are correct according to you. Bless them, Lord, we pray, for as you bless them, you bless our community. So we receive that, give thanks to you, and all these things we ask this sake.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone that when you speak, please make sure the red light is on, and then I'd recommend you turn the red light off when you finish. The roll call, please, call the roll.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alfred.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Lake.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you very much. We will now go to the approval of the minutes, looking for a motion, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner, who was the Commissioner Thompson? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Here, he, yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to the mayor for the report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. First, I would like to call on Adam to give us an update on the air monitoring report. Do you want to have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. Hey, Adam, when they find a discrepancy, whenever it's deemed and they know where it's at, you said they will find out where it's at. What is the solution, what action? Who's going to take the action to fix that problem, whatever it might be? They locate where it's at, and then they contact Republic, the landfill people, and then they do whatever procedures they use to fix that problem, whether it be ammonia or whatever, sulfate? Is there a process that they do to fix that problem?
Commissioner Winters, then Commissioner Rogers.
I like the fact that you do the green light, red light, and yellow light, right? That's the way to say if there's a problem or there's not. So does that come to you all, and then you let us know at a point in time that it's being done? And that's what you will give, at any point when there's a red light, when there's a major red light, concerns you have, that's when you'll kick it back to us, right? All the time. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, then Commissioner Hughes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor and Adam, these reports that we're going to be sending to the landfill, are they, is there anything they're going to use these for? Because I, and I hope they do, because in previous conversations that we've had, we talked that, you know, TDEC, you know, we'll send them to TDEC, and they don't have any use for them because they don't monitor smells, and we've sent them over to the landfill, and it seems like, you know, they're not really, in the past, haven't used them. Are they kind of moving to be on board with this and work with us and have, you know, some type of potential outcome of success for this? So, and I guess my final question is, is that by us giving them these reports for, you know, future obligation of the next three days, and a report card to them saying this, but there is nothing mandated in the contracts that we have that they have to do anything with this? They could basically just send it to spam if they wanted to? Our hope is, is that they will actually use it, but there's nothing that binding that says they will actually use this and do anything to fix the problems that they're having. Well, I hope, I truly hope that they do, because, I mean, it's been an ongoing issue for years, and a seventy thousand dollar bill that, you know, I think we're actually voting on today to renew this contract with them, and, you know, if we're spending this, these funds to try and make that part of town and that part of the county better, and smell better, and safer, and cleaner for people, I hope that, and encourage them to continue to use it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hughes.
Adam, I must commend you. This is one thing that the system, when we voted it in originally, was supposed to have done, and it is something that, one, that you got to think for a second, everybody uses odor when we talk about the landfill. There's no system in this world that can check odor, but what it can do is gas, the gases that's coming off from the landfill. TDEC solid waste does not control odor, they don't control gases. Air pollution does, that's part of TDEC also. You have to go through a different branch to get to them. You hardly ever hear them say that, but that's who typically checks the air there. Keep in mind, when we're talking about the seventy thousand also, that is coming from the landfill itself. It's, this money can only be used for a few items. I mean, one, we use it to clean up tires, we use it for different things of that nature, so it's not to say taxpayer money exactly. This is the landfill helping us basically watch the system itself and control it and know what's going on out there.
Anyone else? Clear?
Okay. Thank you, Adam, for that report, appreciate it. I just want to make this announcement, it's that time of year, Bradley County has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting once again. The Government Finance Officers Association has bestowed the prestigious Certificate of Achievement for Excellence upon Bradley County for its outstanding annual comprehensive financial report for the last fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-two. This is the nineteenth consecutive year that Bradley County has earned this achievement. This esteemed recognition is a testament to Bradley County's unwavering commitment to financial transparency and adherence to the highest standards of governmental accounting and financial reporting. The GFOA's certificate of achievement is not just an accolade, it is the highest form of recognition in the realm of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Bradley County is honored to receive this distinguished recognition. The achievement reflects the collaborative efforts of the county's financial team and administration in upholding the highest standards of financial reporting. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that, the nineteenth year in a row that we have received that award. No septic tank report today, nothing has changed in the last two weeks. Guess all of the diggers have gone on strike. We've still got four more in the local program and thirteen more in the RCND program, and not much headway is being made, and probably won't be made through the holidays. Remind everyone, if you bagged or would like to bag, would like to learn how to bag again, tomorrow is the Celebrity Bagging Day at Food City, two o'clock tomorrow. Been doing this for many years, in the last two years, I believe, we've taken home the trophy, so rest up and come and help us bag tomorrow and be extra friendly and make some tips, and the ones that raise the most money wins the award, and hopefully we'll be able to keep that trophy. It's tomorrow afternoon, two o'clock, at Food City. That's all I have, unless someone has a question.
Thank you very much. We'll now entertain a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Okay, Commissioner Thompson on the motion, Commissioner Beatty on the second. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yeah.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, there was a few comments made by some of the commissioners on this legislative body, speaking about Israel, after some, speaking with them this past week and speaking with Ms. Moultrie and Crystal, we have written a resolution requesting the governor and the Tennessee General Assembly to stand with Israel and as it defends itself against the war launched by Hamas. Mr. Chairman, each of you have a copy of this resolution requesting the governor and the Tennessee General Assembly to stand with Israel as it defends itself against the war launched by Hamas, and a letter to accompany the resolution to the governor and to our legislative delegation. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this resolution as presented.
Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Winters will make the second, open for discussion, please. Commissioner Winters, please.
As all, as all of you know, last week, we had some comments, I did, and several of us regarding, from our constituents, saying it's time for us to reaffirm our commitment to Israel as the key ally of the United States in the Middle East, as an ally that's been a part of, we as a Christian nation, for all of most of our lives, that's in this room. So we felt, or I did, I don't really get, you know, you, many of you may get a lot of emails, and a lot of texts, a lot of calls, I get some, but in this one, I got about a dozen plus that were saying it's time to reaffirm our commitment as a community, and now recommend to the state that we go on record. Our nation is becoming divided as it's never been before, and I think it's time for us in this community to speak up and say that we are for Israel. Our religion says to pray for the peace of Israel. Our religion says that we learned how much God loves us through Israel, because he disciplined them, he showed them how much he loved them, and he took a nation that was the weakest nation in the Middle East and made it the strongest nation among its peers, to where kings were afraid of the prophets during that time. So it's time, we think, my district has spoken very strongly, Josh and I together, our constituents have said, it's time to reaffirm, and I hope you join us today, as we affirm that commitment to our ally, Israel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate everyone voting on that today and accepting that. I like to say with Commissioner Winters, I too have received numerous as city commissioners. We don't get a whole lot of calls about things that happen out in the county a whole lot, and a lot of the phone calls that we do get, we try to help, but a lot of times it's passing it off to our counterparts at the city council. As a county legislative body, there is not a whole lot we can do when it comes to, and I think Grant actually wrote this in his article, and there's not a whole lot that we can do when it comes to foreign relations. But one thing that we can do is ask our state legislative body, our state representatives, and our state senators, and our governors, to stand with Israel and do everything that the state of Tennessee can, along with encouraging our federal partners, as we know how heated and things are discussed there right now, to do everything that they can as well, to support the people of Israel, to try and receive the eleven-plus United States citizens, you know, bodies back that were killed, the numerous ones that were kidnapped and are still being held hostage, and trying to find a route for peace. So I do appreciate everyone supporting this resolution today, and, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too have gotten several emails about Israel, we do stand with them. I wanted to give out condolences for Rosalynn Carter, our former president, Jimmy Carter's wife, she passed away. Wanted to thank Crystal for handling the situation I had with a constituent, and go Bears, and go Mustangs. Sixth district is doing well, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I too would like to say I'm standing with Israel, and I'm proud of the Bradley Bears and Walker Valley Mustangs. I'd say, go Friday night, and bring, bring home another victory Friday night, so you can get to the, to the main state championship the next Friday. And that's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, one more thing, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving this Thursday. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater, please.
I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district's doing well, no complaints or no phone calls, that's all I have.
Commissioner Thompson.
Fourth district's doing about halfway good, other than that, we're okay.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I echo the thoughts on the Bradley Bears and the Walker Valley Mustangs, and I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Congratulations to our county schools for the awards that they received, or acclamation that their, our elementary and middle schools are the best in the state of Tennessee, in the highest percentages. I am a rookie bagger. I got into this contest last year, never having do any more than carrying a bag out of a grocery store, and I got to stand there with the line, with everybody going through the line, and the only person, the person that saved me of not looking like I just was totally inept was Tim Mason. Tim came over beside me and said, if you will, if you will follow my lead, he just would take the items coming out of the, you know, the line, and the cans would go here, the milk would go here, the bread would go at the end, and saved me. And I want to thank him for that, and I look forward to attending this contest tomorrow and show what I've learned from last year. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, it was so bad last year, we were looking at the video, and the people, when they left Mr. Winters' aisle, was actually taking money out of the tip box. So maybe this year, they'll be putting it back.
I'll do my best, I'll do my best for the team.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Wonder if Mr. Winters was doing it for the tips, or whatever, that's on the back.
I didn't get many tips.
Alrighty, we'll now go to Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, while families connect and sharing the joy of time to reflect and build on new memories, let us remember those that are struggling through loss and grief in this season. I want to share my condolences to the families that suffered a tragic loss this past week, the McCauley family, Shirley and Eugene, the Morrow family, Justin and his young son, and the Hedrick family, Billy, Sandra, Brandon, and Lisa, are each experiencing grief as a result of a car accident that claimed the lives of Heather Morrow, her infant daughter, as well as Nick Hedrick, who is my cousin. David says in Psalms that the Lord is near to the brokenhearted, he saves those that are crushed in spirit. I pray that our Heavenly Father would draw near to these families during this time and comfort those that are suffering with loss during this season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that is all.
Thank you. Commissioner Alfred, please.
Yes, just a couple of things. Mr. Mason, if you get a chance, send your people, there's a couple of mattresses right down the road from my house, I run at the room this morning, I don't know how in the world somebody dumped mattresses right there in that big curb without getting steeled? So, that's becoming a death dump along there, and again, along the drag strip. Other than that, District Two's doing well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, please.
Commissioner Alfred, it almost sounds like they're trying to put a barrier up, a nice cushion barrier for you. Mr. Chairman, it's odd that I look across the audience every week to see all's here, and this week, to my great surprise, I had two aunts here, Kay and Anna Stokes. All I ask is, please don't ask about my childhood, because they can tell you stories that'll probably carry you up to death. Anyway, otherwise, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Commissioner Beatty?
Everything's good in the first district.
Thank you. We'll now go down to the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Goins, Commissioner Winters. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Agenda Item A, Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution authorizing Bradley County Mayor to enter into an extension of the Monitoring Service Agreement with EnviroSuits for an additional one-year term through December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to continue to provide runoff odor monitoring at the Bradley County landfill for an annual-based compensation amount of seventy thousand to twenty dollars. At least can be seen on pages four, or forty-five and forty-six, I put that in form of motion.
Commissioner Thompson will present the second. Discussion, please. Discussion closed, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Agenda Item B, Commissioner Mason, please.
Chairman, this is a motion to approve road committee recommendation to extend Wayfair Drive by one hundred and fifty feet at the request of the road superintendent, and you can see this on pages forty-seven.
Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Agenda Item C, Commissioner Mason.
This is a motion to approve the road committee recommendation to notify Brad Drive property owners, they have They have 60 days to agree to a solution regarding the placement of Brad Drive, or the road superintendent will move forward in the best interest of the county.
Second.
Commissioner Slater on the second. Any discussion, please? Call the roll.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater. Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
We'll now go to Agenda Item D. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from forestry agricultural residential district to general commercial district, property located at 5920 Water Level Highway East, I'm assuming, and identified by tax map 68 parcel 6,000. At least can be seen on Pages 48 and 49. I put that in form of motion.
Second. Commissioner Goins on the second. We'll now go into a public hearing on the rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this request? Open to the public. Anyone here?
I'm not sure this is the rezoning that I'm here to speak about. I was just here for 182 Wilkerson.
No, that's coming up. Yeah, it's down the road here. Anyone like to speak for or against the Water Level Highway? The public hearing is now closed. If there is no further discussion, clerk.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Plant Commission did vote in favor of approving this.
Was it?
I believe it was all in favor.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Agenda Item A. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from forestry agricultural residential district to general industrial district property located at 182 Wilkerson Road Northeast, identified by tax map 043, parcel 2100. At least can be seen on Pages 50 and 51. The Planting Commission did vote denial for this. I put that in the form of motion.
Second. Commissioner Goins on the second. What was the vote on the Planting Commission, please? Five to two?
Five to two.
Okay.
Seven.
I'm sorry?
Was it seven, two votes against? I was thinking it's five, two, and one.
Okay. All right. We'll now go into a public hearing on the rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this request? Yes, ma'am. Please. Give your name, please.
My name is Toni Krantz. I'm sorry. I'm here representing Peachtree Point Manufactured Home Park. We sit directly to the west of the 182 Wilkerson property. I'm here representing the park owner, Jerry Jacobson, as well as individual homeowners in the park. When these people purchased their homes in our park, it was because it was a peaceful, quiet, safe place to live. They never imagined that there would be a rezoning of an industrial warehouse district in their backyard. The sound of trucks coming and going all hours of the day, possibly through the night, the exhaust fumes from diesel of the trucks, as well as the safety issue of strangers in their backyard loading and unloading trucks of all hours. I'm just wondering if we were voting on putting it in your backyard, if you would vote yes to this. I can't imagine you would. When the property owner at 182 Wilkerson purchased the property, he knew it was zoned, forestry, agricultural, residential. I understand there's an opportunity to possibly make some money here, but do it on another property away from the hard-working Bradley County homeowners. They don't deserve this. Not only do they not deserve the noise and the exhaust and the traffic coming up and down Michigan Avenue, their home values, their home values are going to be harmed. So please, when you vote today, vote, keeping in mind, would you want this in your backyard? Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Commissioner Slater, please.
I have a couple of questions for you. Thank you for being here, first of all. Are you a homeowner?
I work for the owner of the property.
Okay.
Of Peachtree Point.
Okay. So with him being a homeowner, or I'll ask you the same question. Do you believe a homeowner has the right to do with their property what they want and put on their property what they want?
To some degree, yes. Obviously, there's a maintenance issue, and we have to keep properties well-maintained in a park. Yes.
So a homeowner should have the right to choose what they do with their property?
If it's not harming other people.
Well, so it's a yes or no. It's a yes or no?
Well, it's not yes or no, because if it's harming 77 home spaces, then, no, they don't have a right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
You said it was Norris Road, is that correct? Is where?
255 Norris Road is where our, is our office address, but it's 150 Peachtree Parkway.
And it's about a, less than a quarter mile from Formulated Solutions and Bayer? So is Bayer and Formulated Solutions causing an issue with your park as well? And what about the?
Causing traffic.
What about the airport? Is the sound and the roads and the airport people going back and forth and planes coming in?
Yes, we have homeowners that have.
So should we get rid of Bayer and Formulated Solutions and the airport as well?
I'm not asking you to get rid of them. I'm asking you to not add, not add to the problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, please? Mr. Hughes.
Ma'am, I'm ready. Just say, the reason that the Planting Commission denied it was because it didn't conform with the growth plan, which was agreement that was made between the city and county some, how many years ago here?
The one you're referring to, I don't know that was ever approved by the county, was it? It's in the urban growth boundary, but.
It's 2014.
14?
It was 2014, I think.
So it's in 2014. So that's the reason it wasn't approved by the Planting Commission. So I can't tell other commissioners how to vote up here. I can only tell you how.
Anyone else, please? Commissioner Rogers.
I don't have a question for you. I do have a question for our attorney, though, whenever we can get to that.
We're about to get to it. Go, sir.
Is now okay?
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Freiberg, the growth plan that's been mentioned multiple times, and it was mentioned on this case, it's been mentioned on others as well. I'm just trying to understand clarity, because I've heard numerous different things, that we have a strategic plan between the city and a county, we have a growth plan, and there's about three or four other ones. And there was one, I believe, that was adopted by the county, but there was others that were never adopted by the county. And there was one that was adopted by the Planning Commission, but it wasn't adopted by the County Commission. And so I'm just kind of curious, is there any light that you could shed on that this growth plan that we keep being told that it was adopted and is adopted by the county, but from my understanding and the research and the people that I've talked with, that that was never adopted by the county to use?
Okay, so there is a growth plan that was approved between city and county, which is basically an agreement about growth of the city. And that is not what, I don't think anybody was talking about here. I believe, and Commissioner Hughes can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe what you're talking about when Planning Commission is looking at is what we call the land use plan. That is a plan that gives the county guidance about zoning of property and where certain zones should be, should not be, where residential, commercial, industrial, those type of things. It has been, my understanding is that has been approved by the Planning Commission. That is not something that you all ever adopted, which is certainly fine. It has been approved, though, by the Planning Commission, which you all do put in place to make some decisions and give you all recommendations. So the land use plan is something that I think has always been used when zoning comes up as a tool to look at where potential growth could be. The strategic plan is different than that, so I'm calling it the land use plan, but that's the plan that talks about zoning in areas where things should be. And to my knowledge, that has been approved only by the Planning Commission.
And not by the County Commission.
Not by the County Commission. That's correct.
And I thank you for the clarity, because there's 27 strategic plans and growth plans and land use plan. And I'm just, you hear different ones, and so to try and have some clarity, last week in the work session, I made a comment that I wish you were there so we could ask all those questions during that time, just because it's very confusing when you have all these different plans and you don't know which one you go by and look at. So I appreciate the clarity on it.
Commissioner Rogers, you'll have to forgive me. I've always put those all together, because when we look at it as in the planning, it's all together when we're looking at it. So you'll have to forgive me for my wording of it.
Commissioner Slater, then Commissioner Thompson, please.
Commissioner Hughes, the plan that you referenced, or the plan that the attorney just referenced, does the Planning Commission always look at that before making a zoning decision?
My understanding is typically it was Bentley would look at that prior to. Then we have a new person that came in, and at that time, I don't know if they just missed, didn't see it or what, and probably just didn't realize they were supposed to look at it. But I know that Bentley always looked at prior to anything that we approved.
And the former person always made the recommendation based off that plan?
You'd have to ask him about that. I'm assuming so.
Did you, does the Planning Commission always use that plan?
I would assume so, whenever he was there.
And then I have one more question for the attorney. Is there a legal reason to deny this request of the homeowner? Or, I'm sorry, to deny the request to deny what they want to do?
Well, there is always a legal reason that you all are supposed to look at each request individually and based on the public hearing that occurs and the information that you have, make a decision about whether or not it should be rezoned. The legal standard is that we have to be, make sure that our decision is not arbitrary or capricious and not without, it was not reasonably based justified by what you hear and the reasons that you have. So any rezoning can be denied as long as that standard is met.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
We keep talking about the growth plan. I was here when the growth plan was passed, and it wasn't worth a heck. First of all, it gave the city the right to annex. That's about what it amounted to. And now they're using this hostage on that, and they always still continue to do that. And we got this interlocal agreements now, and that's nothing but annexation. I don't know what else you would call it. And I'm 100% against annexation, and we got people up here that said on this bench here that they're, I know their districts are in the city, and they get a lot of votes out of the city, but still, I'm in the county. And we done give that city enough of land. We don't need to give them no more. I'm strictly against annexation.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Mr. Chairman, I did look at the land use plan yesterday. And part of what the challenge in that plan was when it stated that there was a goal to make harmony happen between rural, residential, and industrial, the industrial complex that would be coming on in the future. And I think that's what we're talking about right here. How we build industry and we build occupational opportunities and progress, as we have, still keep the residential life and rural life in place, and that's what we're looking at today, is a residency where the people are happy with where they are, and yet there's a possible, a great need to have warehouse space and all that in the community. And that's a battle, that's what we'll face from now on. It's called progress. As the progress moves through, how do we keep the residential and rural and the beautiful Bradley County that we have, and at the same time, grow an industrial base and a base that actually moves the products, which we'd be looking at here, with housing right there. And I think that's what the Planning Commission always has to deal with, is how you, and what I typically go with is where the committee is, that's why we put them in place, and whether there are people that are in the midst of that that have housing that they'd like for us to protect. That's where I live.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, please. Lake, just give your name, please.
My name's Lake Mantooth. I own the property right across the road from this property we're talking about. We're almost a mile up Wilkerson Road, both of us on each side of the road. We started development there two years ago. It takes about a year to get the permits in place, and it takes about a year to get a phase completed, so we have one phase completed now, 64 lots. We're starting six houses today. And, you know, we bought this property, we're spending several, several, several million dollars for infrastructure, water, sewer, and it's going to have a huge tax base, you know, for the county and the city over the longevity of the rest of the world days. So we would really hope that maybe we could, could not pass this to be a commercial property over here because of the residential across the road. We're going to have 300 families. Going to put, you know, a lot of traffic on that road. It's going to have to be addressed at some point. And I don't think the truck traffic and the car traffic's going to mingle very good on that road. But anyway, we're investing a lot of money, and we're probably, we're probably looking at $100 million between me and the builder. We're probably looking at $100 million investment right across the road from this. So we'd like some consideration, you know, about what we have invested. When I went to look at this property, the first thing I looked for is the growth plan. Before I go any further, I see what the growth plan is, what the growth plan area costs for in this area. And I did that on this property, and it cost a residential. So that's why I purchased the property and went forward.
Lake, let me ask you a question.
Okay.
If that property, if it was where it wasn't in that growth plan, we didn't have the urban growth area or the, to show where residential, what have you, goes in, would you have bought that property at that time?
No.
Commissioner Alfred, then Commissioner Ledford.
Yes, Mr. Mantooth. Just a question. That Wilkerson Road's really a narrow road to start with, and you're going to throw 300 houses on the left side, and we're looking at a bunch of industrial buildings on the right-hand side. Is anyone planning on widening that road or doing anything to correct that? Because I know you have no access onto Michigan Avenue either way. You're going to have to come up Wilkerson Road. So somebody's going to have to spend a ton of money widening that road if they start putting transfer trucks coming up that road onto Michigan Avenue. You're going to end up where they big red light or something, because you're looking at a major, major problem there on Wilkerson Road, because it's barely wide enough for one car, not trucks and cars.
It don't have a 40-foot right-of-way total. When I annexed the property into the city, I gave the city, they were going to get with the county, and they were going to take the road over from Michigan Avenue Road all the way to the top of the hill up there where I annexed into. And I gave them 10-foot of property from Michigan Avenue Road all the way to the top of the hill to widen that road at some point if they want to.
Anyone else? Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mantooth, you mentioned a partner. Who's your partner?
Oh, I don't have a partner in the development of the property. I sold the lots to D.R. Horton. So they have a vested interest too, you know, because they're going to be building the houses and sell the houses.
May I ask another question from, I don't know if this is a question to them. Are they here?
Yeah.
Who do they use for their subcontractors and contractors? Do they use local for building? I know that's.
They use quite a bit of local people. I can't tell you how many, but you probably need to talk with them about that.
I'm just curious. I just heard rumor that you only used our concrete local, and the rest of it was out of state, out of town, not in Bradley County.
I don't know their business.
Okay, thank you.
But they're here. They can tell you.
That's up to them if they want to speak on it.
Yes, sorry. Lake Townsend, we had questions about vendors, trade.
Right.
So all vendors and trades are all local from the Patonica area all the way up through Athens, Knoxville. A lot of our development, Georgia markets, we bring up some Alabama, or, uh, Alabama, Atlanta vendors for those, CP. But everyone we try to get are local, all the builders are local, all this is local, everyone's first for our company within this division lives in the.
Sorry, so you're breaking it down, division meaning Chattanooga. I, I failed to hear you say Bradley County.
Um, as far as Bradley County, uh, I'm not sure where all the guys live. We use a lot of vendors that they, they outsource to contractors within local areas. And I would have, I'd have a feeling that some of them live in Bradley.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes.
I had a question for you, actually. May I ask, uh, out of the houses that you're building, what is the average price of those, once they're completed, gonna be?
Uh, we look at ourselves as a, uh, affordable housing. We don't look for, we're not trying to build a house because everything you ever wanted. We're looking to build a house because it's what you need. Our average sale price in this community is smart. But it ranges from seven hundred. Uh, every house we build, again, it's built with the same materials all the other builders in the local area are using. All of our, everything we have as far as material is the same as far as materials. It's just we have the ability to drive the cost down with our labor and having, uh, like, um, uh, national contracts with visual gain cost. That is our goal, is to try to have affordable living, bring housing to the markets that need it. Try to help increase a little bit of the revenue. Forward and bring more people.
The other question I have is, you're looking at three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, if you'd known that there was a possible industrial district coming in next to, to this property, would you have went into this development? Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I don't have a question for you, I'm good, thank you, man. Um, I do have a question for, if there's somebody here that can help me understand. FAR, right, forestry, agriculture and residential. So is it listed as FAR, then they can do agriculture on that property, correct? Does that mean they can have cattle out there? Does that mean they can have chickens out there, chicken houses? Okay, so either they could put a couple, you know, sheds and buildings out there to have a couple of trucks in or they could ninety acres, I think it is, that probably would fit twelve, thirteen, fourteen chicken houses and incinerators? And they could put that on that property as well? I'm just curious, so that it's, they, the way that it's zoned right now, if they wanted to, they could get, I guess, get in the chicken business and I've lived by chicken houses in my entire li, you know, in my life and they're a whole lot worse than it is to be able to have industrial out there and have a couple of tractor trailers coming in and out, just, uh, just as it's zoned in right now. So I just wanted to be, I wanted to be curious on that zoning.
Is there anyone else? Anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beatty, please.
I got a question too for Lake. Uh, if y'all, when you brought this property, didn't the Calfies have their properties for sale about that same time? Okay, do you ask them what they was considering doing or whatever? Or any other property owners around, what they was planning on? Okay. I heard he backed out, well. Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristi Sadler, I'm just a resident, I've been a resident for fourteen years at two sixty-five Norris Way. And I agree with progress, but it is very overcrowded there. I've been peacefully a resident there for fourteen years and sometimes it takes me fifteen minutes to get out of my driveway due to the traffic. If there was any other location that maybe we could put it, I mean, it's just so crowded there on Michigan Avenue Road. I'm sure you all are familiar with the area, uh, but, and sometimes waiting on a school bus for my grandchild is, uh, cars fly up and down the road there and then trucks. I would just wish you would consider that, uh, maybe overgrowth, overcrowding there. There was another location, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak, please? Your first name, please, or your name, please?
I'm here on my personal side of life, um, but I'm Vicki Towne, for the record. My parents actually live in Peachtree Point and so, um, they're not able to be here because of their physical limitations. Sorry, we've just been through a lot with my parents this year. They're both eighty-three years old. And I, you all know me, you all have worked enough with me to know that I, I will be the first one to stand up and say that I'm for progress, I really am. I understand the chicken house comment, I understand all that. My dad just wanted you to hear that him, because he has the right to have a voice, and he does. My parents have lived there for fifteen years, fifteen or sixteen years. And it's a lot, it's like that lady said, it's very busy. When you have an elderly parent in a situation like I have, then I want to make sure that I limit as much as I can for my parents. And so their fear is a lot of the things that this lady brought up, that came up and spoke earlier, just about, you know, the traffic question and those kind of things. It is a busy complex, there is the residential, I was gonna make that note too, but there are those new homes going in and so I know there's construction with that, I get all of that. But, you know, I think that the people in that vicinity in Peachtree Point and all up and down there do have a voice. And my dad and my mom's voice, because they can't be here, is that they are against it. And they wanted me to come today just to let you all know that, um, because of the busyness, because of the, um, you know, just, I guess, the, a lot of what the lady said, and I'm sorry, just to be stuttering, it's, it's kind of overwhelming when you have to think about the whole big picture because I do see the big picture, I do see the growth that Bradley County needs, I know that. I know that because of my job. But I also know that I have to stand in the shoes of being a resident here and making sure that we are, um, still considering their thoughts and what their desires are. And when my parents moved there, and it still is, it was then, it still is, a very peaceful community. There's elderly people across from my parents, next door, there's a lot of children in that area. And so, um, I'm just here so that you hear my parents' voice, not just mine. But just remember, sometimes it's not about all of the other big stuff. Sometimes it's about listening to the people. And I know you all have listened to me, so I just want you all, I have that desire for you all to listen. And, um, you know, I don't have my parents that much longer, so I wanna make sure that they are heard and that they do have a voice in this. And so I appreciate you all listening to me on this side of things and my personal side because you don't get to hear me talk about that. So, um, I don't think I can really answer any questions other than they just wanna remain in their peaceful, in the, the peaceful side that they have right now.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Questions for me.
Just a second, please.
I don't have a question.
Oh, you don't have a question for me?
No, I just need to talk.
Oh, go ahead.
Boy, this is, this is probably the hardest vote I've ever had. I've been so back and forth on it, it's, it's unreal. Uh, Mr. Calfy, y'all are great people. You're super, super good people. I talked to your brother the other day and he said that y'all was done with that farm and you was, y'all was moving on down Charleston or down to Lower River Road. And, uh, that you was needing to sell it. And I asked him, was there other ways to sell it? And he said, well, sure, I'm sure there is. And once that property's turned in commercial, your taxes go up. And, uh, I've had some family members that was left with taxes. We've been straightening this property up for the last four or five months here on this board. It was down Old Chattanooga Road. And I've had a lot of constituents that's called me. And they've, they've, uh, emailed me and texted me. And, uh, they're the ones that I vote for. So I'm not gonna be voting for this today. But I want you to know, I appreciate you for who you are. And, uh, I hear my constituents speak, so that's the way I've gotta vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, um, I do.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
Question for a few, but you can answer it, I guess. Um, I agree with Commissioner Gilbert, this is a hard, a hard vote to make and, and you have to do what you feel is right and vote your conscience and do, do what you can.
Right.
I believe, and I might be wrong, but I believe Mr. Mantooth, when he spoke, he said that there's three hundred homes going into that subdivision, is that correct? And the Calfies, they have about ninety acres, is that correct? And D.R. Horton, you guys build quarter acre lots, is that about close to it in that area? So with, with quarter acre lots. And the three hundred homes that are getting built on Mr. Mantooth's property and the ninety acres that Mr. Calfy has with quarter acre lots from D.R. Horton and the American standard of family sizes, most American families own two home, or that own a home, own two cars. So at, at that scenario, we're talking about an additional twelve hundred cars a day that are gonna be coming down that road. If, if the Calfies didn't turn it into industrial and say they sold it to D.R. Horton and they let them build lots on it, you're talking about an additional twelve hundred cars that are gonna be in that area. And that, that is the big concern that I've heard from everyone, is traffic and, and noise and movement and being able to drive down this road that's narrow. So, so my question is, is, and I understand tractor trailers are big, I, I get it, I totally understand that.
Right.
But you're talking about four, five or six possible facility, you know, buildings or maybe even just one building that's gonna have a handful of tractor trailers there a day or however many it is. Or twelve hundred additional cars on that road every single day going in and out, not to mention the school buses, everything else that's there. So is it, so my, my question is, is if we're, if, if it's about noise and it's about all this other stuff, are we okay with twelve hundred cars? Or we're not, are we, and we're just not okay with tractor trailers or, or whatever? And we don't even know what's going there, it's just a request to be zoned industrial. And so that, that's just my question. Is twelve hundred cars okay? But, but growth in business is not, I'm just, I'm just.
You will not hear me say growth in business is not because of my position, I know how growth in business is. So I'm not saying that at all. And I do understand there's a lot of cars, I do. You know, if it were up to me, that would all stay farmland, just because, you know, that's just the, my, I guess, my past of wanting things to stay like that. But I know we have to move forward in some ways. I'm strictly here just to say that in this, because it came up as a public hearing and I feel like this is the purpose of the commission is to hear your constituents' voices and to hear the concerns, yes, there's concerns with those, um, with all those cars and all those houses. My parents go to church back that way on Beacon Baptist, so they have to go back on that little road anyway. And so I do understand that, and I don't like that either, I'll just be honest with you, I don't like that either. I get that it is what it is, I do understand that. I just want my parents to always have a voice, no matter how old they are, no matter where they live, no matter what the circumstances are, no matter what our growth is, no matter if we have five hundred homes build, being built or a warehouse being built. I just want them to always know that they have a right to say, I just really don't want this in our area. We're already having the houses built, we don't want more.
One hundred percent.
I guess maybe, maybe that's a better way to say it, so.
I one thousand percent respect that because I, I totally agree, I think every person in this community deserves to have a voice.
Right.
I totally agree, and I understand, listen, I'm for biz, I'm pro-business, I'm pro-housing, right? Like, right?
It's a bad position to be.
Absolutely, right? And, and when we're, I think it's around nine hundred houses short, if not more, in this county right now, we, we need housing developments, we, we totally do. You know, we need to support local builders and local companies, I totally agree with that. But at the same time, we also have to support local property rights and the property rights of people who own those properties and they're the ones that are requesting it.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't want somebody coming in and telling me what I can and can't do with my property. And it's very difficult for me to sit up here and sit there and tell somebody who's requesting this to be able, who's requesting it for their property, that it's okay, it's not okay for them to do that. But in other scenarios, we vote okay for it in other situations and in other areas, so.
And I think it's just because of the zoning issue is the reason that.
My, my question was on the, the twelve hundred cars, potential cars that could be down that road every.
I completely understand that.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
Commissioner Rogers, the proposed use for it is on page fifty, it says industrial park slash warehouse development. If this sale doesn't go through for the warehouse development, you still have the I-1 zoning there. Ron, may I ask you, right off the top of your head, what is I-1 actually approved for?
Vicki, you can sit down if you'd like. Can you come up and speak and? Can you come up and speak in the mic, please, so we can, people out in space here can hear you?
I-1 is basically a light industrial.
What does that consist of?
I'd have to look, be honest with you, because there's so many different things. But it does not include landfills, or it does not include anything hazardous, cannot be an I-1. It has to be light industrial warehouses, manufacturing, small manufacturing, um, such as that.
Thank you.
Okay, one thing about, let me say now that I'm up here at the mic where you can hear me, FAR is forestry, agricultural, residential. Any forestry, agricultural can go in that zone. Don't matter if it's chicken houses or hog lots, it's in there. Okay? Uh, one thing to be in mind, that there is a committee together now to widen Michigan Avenue Road up to the airport. That is being worked on and between city and county, uh, that committee's got it going now. Okay? Don't know what timeframe, if it'll be next week or next year or ten years, but there it is, availability, that it is coming. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, just to call for a question.
Call, call for the question. Commissioner Thompson.
I'd like to speak.
How about it? Um, I'm gonna echo what God said, because this is our district and that's where our constituents are. And, uh, I've been through, I've been here for thirty years. And I've been through a lot of communications from our districts and what, what they want and what they don't want. And there's one thing I have done, is try to listen to my people, because they're the one that I represent. And by doing that, I've always done right, I hope. And there's some, uh, there's some votes that I've made for tax increases and stuff like that, that you get chewed out, you get chewed out any way you go sometimes. But the thing that you gotta listen to is the people that represent, that you represent. And that's, that's the people that go to the poll and vote for you. And, uh, if they live in your district, you better listen to them, if you don't, you'll be out the next time around. So, uh, again, I'd like to say that, uh, it's, it's not what you wanna do sometime, it's what your constituents want, because they're the one that lives there. If something comes to my house and I don't want it, then I'm gonna fight it if I don't want it. And that's, and that's exactly what you're supposed to do. And I, I respect my. And I, I respect my constituents, and I will vote, and I've got plenty of calls on this, both ways, and I'm gonna vote the way my constituents want. And that's the way I'll vote this morning.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would, uh, like to speak? Please.
You vote yes on this if they were putting it in your backyard? You keep saying all, you know, like you're gonna vote yes to rezoning it, and I get that, but would you vote yes if this was in your backyard? Think about it, would you want a big eyesore with tractor trailers coming and going? You know, I mean, it's something, it's only fair.
Do you wanna respond? Ma'am, I live on Spring Place Road, I'm the sixth district, and, and I'm not trying to be mean here, I'm not. Uh, I live right on Spring Place Road, me and Tim both do. And, about three years ago, Dollar General Store bought a home where they had a business, and put a Dollar General Store there. Now, uh, now I know Dollar General Store's different, I know, I get it, I love my Dollar General Store. I'll just go ahead and tell you. Cause it's right there, I need a loaf of bread, I'm two hundred yards away from the store. Where before, I was five miles to go to a store, or actually, there's a little store right, right down that Springs Road, um, about three, about three miles. But, you, you know, I get where you're coming from, and I get it ma'am, I do.
I think, uh, Spring Place Road is a state road, not a county road, uh, and I think that has a lot, a lot of bearing on this, uh, thank you very much, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, we, point of order, please. We have a call for the question, we should've stopped comments then, we should've voted to continue with this con- con- conversation, or we should've not voted to do it. We had a call for the question, we should've voted on it.
I, I under- I understand the call for the question, but we also have an obligation to let the audience speak, and for the last time, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
I was gonna ask for one question.
Commissioner Beatty.
What I'm gonna ask them, the people lives, the residents in that area, do you, do y'all want warehouses, or you want chicken houses?
Oh, Lord.
In the smile, in the smile. Okay? That's all I need to know.
Mr. Chairman.
The call for the question has been made, uh, that it's time, is there anyone else out here to like to speak?
I'm Rex Calfy, and I spoke here last week. Um, as far as your constituents, I mean, we've already, you've asked one of these ladies that has spoken, um, as property owners, do we have rights? Would you want that, somebody telling you what you can and cannot do with your property? So, be sure, how your constituents answer that question. Be sure that they are saying, "This is my property, you know, that I should be able to do what I want to with it." Okay, we're talking a lot about the Peachtree Point development. So, first with them, there was a factory just right across the road already, where there were tractor trailer trucks going in and out. There's the evangelism building there now, there's tractor trailer trucks in there, going up to the bay or shearing plow, whatever. All of that was already in place when these people moved in Peachtree Point. They already were looking at industry. Um, this development that is coming into place, they're building those homes at the door, I mean, they're, right behind a lot of those homes that's gonna be put in place, is already in an industry. We're not asking that this property's gonna be something way different from what is already there. I'm just not understanding why there's so much opposition. They're building these homes in an industrial area. They're building these homes where airplanes fly over them to the airport. You guys have all flown into places and looked out the window on an airplane. You see industry, you see houses, you see everything, you're flying into an airport. So, I don't really know why that we are having any opposition. I mean, this warehousing that's potentially gonna be built, I don't see that it's gonna be anything that's gonna bother anybody. Matter of fact, it may be more accommodating to people than what could be there if it was a big residential development. So, just please keep our property rights considered whenever you are voting. I mean, this is something that, I don't necessarily think's gonna be bad for anybody. So, I just appreciate your consideration, I appreciate you guys, the discussion you've had here today.
Anyone else from the audience would like to speak? We've had a call to, we've had a call, call him to vote. Ma'am, is this, is this relating to what we're discussing here, or the, well, we're, we're on this, no, we're, we've already passed through the landfill, ma'am, we're on, we're on another topic right now. Well, we had a chance to speak earlier. We can, we can speak, uh, I'll tell you what, let's speak at the end, the audience has five minutes to speak at the end. We need to get this thing moving that we're on, we'll let you speak at the end. Okay? All right, anyone else?
This is what can be, well, there it went. I apologize, I had it set up, Nick Liffey.
It's only time, sir, we've.
Yeah, we all ain't got enough, that's for sure. Okay. What can be in a I-1 zone is manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution centers, dyeing and finishing of textiles, equipment rental, leasing, and storage services, asphalt refining or mixing plant, or recycling collection centers.
Thank you very much, anyone else from the audience before we close this public hearing? No one else? We've had a call for the vote, call the roll, please.
Mason?
No.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
No.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Alford?
No.
Cry?
No.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert? Thompson? Goins?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? That is five in favor, eight opposed, and one absent.
Okay. We'll go on to Agenda Item E. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I think this one will take a minute too. This resolution authorized Bradley County Mayor to enter into an annexation inter- interlocal agreement between the City of Cleveland and Bradley County regarding non-continuous annexation of property currently owned by Larry and Nancy Escue, Tax Map, Tax Map zero two six parcel zero two nine point zero one. These can be seen on pages fifty-two through sixty-eight. I put this in the form of motion.
Okay. I have a second. Commissioner Goins, open for discussion. We'll go into, um, a public, we don't have to have a public hearing on this one, all right. Open for discussion, please. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much, we'll now go to communication from the audience, uh, I'll recognize this lady right here, please, if you'd come up to the mic. Please.
And, uh, what I would like to ask, how much danger are they in that landfill blowing, or catching anything on fire with them huge fires?
Well, you have an answer to that, but I don't. I'm not a, I'm not a crystal ball guy on landfills.
Uh, that is, uh, uh, you know, uh, I wonder if all that gas building up, they're trying to burn down, and, uh, fires, uh, especially when the wind's blowing, it looks like it's gonna catch the trees on fire. And I wonder if it did, it would burn out that whole neighborhood. And, uh, and then, of course, if that landfill was to blow up, and you know there's gas and other, uh, what's gonna happen to us, I think it's gonna blow up high of Cleveland, as high as it is. And another thing I'd like to ask, I would like to ask, uh, Tim Mason there, he come over there, and he seen the situation that we live. Uh, awful trashy people, and for me and my sister, uh, we, uh, keep our place, her place clean, I live with her. Um, and I, uh, would like to know if, why Tim can't do something about all of that trashy people around there? Because, uh, that place needs to be cleaned up. Yeah, I mean, it is snakey, rat, roach, bugs, you name it. And, uh, Tim is over there, so I can't understand why he don't do something about that. Cause he is voted in office.
Tim, you wanna?
I, I think I've been over there to, to speak to you and your, your sister, yes. And I have, I've sent out letters to, to the owners.
Because they're still, uh, they're worse now than they were.
Well, I, I can honestly say I'm trying.
Well, I'll tell you what you need to do.
Okay.
If you want my advice, you need to get over there, and you need to, when them pe- people run in the house and all, you need to knock on their door till they come out. And you need to take and tell them, "We give you so long to get this place cleaned up." Cause it's a, a menace to everybody.
Thank, thank you for the advice.
And, uh, I, I think if you did that, the letters, they just pull them off the door and throw them away in the yard.
Not when they have to show up in court.
And, uh, if that would happen one or two times, it might do some good. But right now, no, it's not doing no good. And, uh, if you want to go back in office, you better do something, cause I have. Whenever I fight for somebody for office, I do a good job, they go in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, the lady, that, uh, Lori, the lady behind you, does she wanna speak? Please.
We carry a lot of boats.
Aunt Kay. Aunt Kay. Aunt Kay. I'm gonna tell everybody, just listen to what they're saying, I've been spanked many, many times by both of them, and punished, so just take their advice and kinda go with it. We will get with you, me and myself and Tim will get with you after the meeting though, cause see what we can take care of.
Point of order, point of order.
Ma'am?
Point of order.
Ma'am, you're not allowed, or to, to mention anyone by name.
Well, I'll just, I'll just end on that, that'll be up to the people, good people of sixth district, whether they vote me back in or not.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, in the back. Your name, please, and you have five minutes.
And it's fast, and first of all, I'd like to thank my neighbors for coming. I'd like to thank, know your name for the report, and you can back me up on this, you mentioned the VOC over the weekend, but what you didn't mention was that we had hydrogen sulfide gas starting at five AM Sunday morning. It lasted till ten AM. Now, I'd like to point out that the monitor that picks this up is not near my house. What K-Breeze is diluted before it gets to me, before it gets to the monitor, it's less. And I'd like for him to back me up that there was hydrogen sulfide on the Reno monitor Sunday morning. What's happened is they've allowed sewer sludge, raw sewer sludge to be brought in again, and then they did not cover over the weekend. You can ride up to Bancroft Church, Bancroft, the neighborhood across from Bancroft Church, you can see how they do not cover. You talk about T-Deck, uh, not doing, not covering odors, they don't cover not covering, they don't cover dust, they don't cover, uh, fires. If you look on their data finder, every time something's reported, it's no problem found. Uh, and as far as, we're not the, what your odors are, you've got sewer odor, you've got obnoxious, what I call, uh, garbage dumpster odor, and then you have the hydrogen sulfate odor. And I cannot describe that except for it's a strong burning chemical odor. And, this is happening, and I have made two calls this morning to T-Deck in Nashville, I no longer call y'all, I no longer call Chattanooga, I call Nashville. I called and reported the, uh, what happened over the weekend, and at nine fifteen this morning, I had gas and, gas and garbage odor again. Y'all, all we ask is that you make them do what they are required to do, what they stood up here and told you they would do. That's all we're asking. That's all we've ever asked for. And also, we didn't expect to have sewer, raw sewage up in our neighborhood.
Thank you very much, anyone else would like to speak? Yes, please.
Thomas, Hoover Nature Road, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Mayor Davis. We had a little water situation up at Veteran Cemetery, and I want to commend Mayor Davis, especially Mr. Lewis, they had it resolved in a very quick and honoring manner, and I'm very thankful for it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, anyone else would like to speak? We'll go on down to announcements, upcoming events. The next meeting will be December the fourth at seven PM. It will be a voting session, not a work session, as is put on your calendar. Uh, upcoming events, county offices are closed November the twenty-third and twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Main Street Cleveland, Christmas Parade, December the second at six PM downtown. Finance Committee, December the fourth at eleven thirty AM here at the courthouse. The, tomorrow, again, to repeat what the mayor said earlier, this United Way Celebrity Bagging Competition at Oakway Street, United Way, this is our chance to achieve an unprecedented three-peat. Please plan to be at Food City to bag and retain our title tomorrow. And I believe that is it. We are, we are adjourned.